Get your attention, please. City of Lynn's only Board of Appeals agenda for Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in room 302. Go ahead.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Present.
Member McCullough?
Present.
Member Wooton?
Present.
Member Crowitz?
Present.
And Member Kellman?
Present. We have a call. Minutes of the meeting, last meeting. Motion is allowed to accept, right?
Yes, I'm making motion to grant.
Accepted.
Accepted. Oh, famously, I?
Ah.
The owner's now... He has his family.
That's your first case.
First case this evening will be 180 Commercial Street. You? 7:00 PM.
Oh, yes. 180 Commercial Street, parcel number 051748053. Petitioner Lynn, Business Park Realty, trust by its principal Nicholas Bonino, to vary the provision of the City of Lynn Zone Ordinance to allow an open-air food stand in the WF1 district to sell food during events at the Bentwater Brewing Company. The applicant desired to allow local businesses to partner with Bentwater to showcase food during public events. The variance request requires the Zoning Board of Appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstance relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degrading from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
Thank you. Here is a vote for those in favor. Anyone here in favor of this petition?
Is he? Are you?
I work there.
Are you here to represent this case?
Yes.
Are you in favor?
Yes.
Are you pleased? Come up to me and say your name and address and your occupation.
Wendy Faciano, I'm the CFO at Bentwater Brewing Company.
I mean?
I'm the CFO at Bentwater Brewing Company.
Okay. And your name?
Wendy Faciano.
All right. And your address?
180 Commercial Street.
Okay. You have the floor.
Oh, I know I was gonna have to talk tonight. They told me to just come represent them.
Well, you can explain to the board what you intend to do.
Um, yeah, they just wanted a little more flexibility in regards to events during the summer and the fall. By no means very often, but instead of coming here for our employment every time, and just it gives us a little more flexibility when we're doing events in that area.
So this is not a permanent location?
It's a permanent, yeah, so 180 Commercial Street is a permanent location, but we're not going to do events every day, or they're periodic. And they're really only in the summer and the fall. So it's, it's, yeah, it's in the Lynn Business Park complex, which is why he owns it, which is why he, I guess, submitted this. But, yeah, so it'd be, it's not anything that's, we're not gonna have permanent structures or anything, but it's just to give us a little more flexibility when it happens, time to do events.
Is it food trucks that are coming in? Okay.
Yeah, usually local food trucks.
So is it just one, or?
Right now, yeah, right now, we do, we can come and get a day permit, or we come here and get a permit.
Yeah, I'm familiar with a similar operation up in Lowell where they have a rotating food truck comes in every week.
Oh, yeah, we don't, it's not even...
At a brewery?
It's periodic, it's maybe in the summer, it's, yeah, yeah. It's maybe once every couple weeks during the summer, and then, you know, not in the winter.
So all the food licensing and prep is done by the truck, not by Bentwater?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you guys are not in the events, you're just trying to eliminate the special permitting at each event?
Yes, yes, yeah. And we came, you know, we came here this summer, I think, three times to get the permitting for the special events, but it's just to sort of avoid that.
So then what would happen to the property when you weren't using it?
Um, well, there's, the, our business is there, that's our production facility, that is, it's our taproom, our production facility, so we're all, we're right there.
You're there anyway.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
There's a letter to read. There's a letter to read.
Where is it?
It's got...
We'll get it.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I just want to ask you.
Yes?
Is anybody in favor of the area, put some potted plants around?
Can we?
Potted plants? There isn't a flower in the whole area. And, you know, you've heard of these areas, it's always nice to see a little pots of flowers or something. Would that be a problem for you?
No, in fact, the taproom manager has had periodically, they tried to do that, but I can ask Krista to eat enough of it.
So you're in favor then?
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, so will that be a stipulation?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you want to read something?
Yes, do you want to? There's a letter from EDIC, Jim Codel, Executive Director of EDIC. There is a petition before your honorable body allowing an open-air food stand in the WF1 district, which would allow food to be sold during events at Bentwater Brewery. The EDIC hired Util as a consultant that crafted the waterfront zoning, and that exists today. The vision that was created after 19 public meetings was a waterfront that people could live, work, and play at. The feeling, the feel strongly, we feel strongly that the event at Bentwater Brewery brings people from all over the region to experience a taste of life. We strongly support the petition and hope that you are, that you act favorably upon this request. If I can answer any question, please do not hesitate to contact me.
Thank you. Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else who's in favor? Hope for those applause, anyone here opposed to this petition? Opposed to this petition? Anyone in favor of applause, what is it? Wish of the board?
Motion to grant?
Motion to grant, second.
Second motion.
With stipulation?
Yes.
With the stipulation of clean up the area and potted plants?
Right.
Yes, you'll see it in writing.
Okay.
And I'll contact you. Can you take a five-minute recess?
Will it be voted?
Oh, you vote, oh, you're gonna vote?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant.
Member McCullough?
Yes, to grant.
Member Wooton?
Yes, to grant.
Member Crowitz?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
With the stipulations of clean up the area and potted plants. And Member Kellman?
Yes, to grant.
Okay.
With the stipulation.
Perfect. You're all set.
Thank you.
We have a five-minute recess.
You're all set.
Okay.
In the meanwhile, we hold. Next case is 96 Light Street, a continued case. Please read that.
96 Light Street, parcel number 036788013. Petitioner Jacques Rosa, to vary the provision of the City of Lynn Zone Ordinance to allow the conversion of a single-family home into a two-family home in the R4 district without significant lot area, 4,058 square feet, where 12,000 square feet is required, frontage 40.16 feet, where 50 feet is required. The variance requires the Zoning Board of Appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstance relating to soil condition, shape, or topography, or such land or structural structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degrading from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
Thank you. All right, the hearing is over, for those in favor. You want a favor? Please come up.
Yes.
Say your name and address.
Yacek Rosa.
Your occupation?
I'm a Realtor.
Realtor, state?
Agent, yeah.
Okay, your name is?
Yacek Rosa.
Okay. Okay, you have the floor.
Well, I think what...
Well, you have to explain to us your intent.
Well, basically, I'm buying a single-family home, and it's just me and my wife. It's quite big, it's about 2,000 square feet, and it's already laid out as a two-family, as stairs in the front, stairs in the back. We don't really need all that space. We figured if we can maybe partition it into two units, that we have some rental income that'll help us out. You want me to repeat that?
Continue.
Just continue.
I mean, that's basically it, and we realized that we don't need the requirements of 12,000 square feet for a multifamily in Lynn, but most multifamilies in Lynn, as I understand it, are on much smaller lots, and the requirement is kind of a recent thing for new developments. This is just a rezoning. And the house is already located in an R4, I believe, as you read, so, and it's basically surrounded by multifamilies. There's one single family, it's a dead-end street, there's one single family that's really there, and everything else is multifamily homes, roughly that size or a little bigger. So I don't, and we're not changing any outside structures, we're not really doing any work that's gonna affect anything that's going on outside, it's just an interior. Instead of having one kitchen, it'll be two kitchens, and there is sufficient parking in the back, the space is a little bit over 4,000 square feet, the lot, we can, we'll probably have four or five parking spaces, we're just planning, I think.
So you don't have a certified parking plan? You haven't seen how many times you've...
We do have, I do have plans for parking.
You have a certified parking plan?
It's accessible with a stamp.
You have anything showing your model parking?
So?
Yeah, that's all, yeah.
I think I have filed the plans in my... When we rest in the hearing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Parking space is... Change it to five.
And I think we're looking for a certified stamped civil drawing, where they will identify all the components on the property and then locate the parking.
A civil engineer.
Civil engineer.
Well, just a survey, in strange to do that.
Yeah. Is that building being used as a two-family now?
What's that?
Is that building being used as a two-family right now? Is there someone living upstairs?
Yeah, then the whole, the whole house was occupied, not as a two-family, but it's almost set up that way because it's...
It's still...
Yes.
Yeah.
At some point.
When you get attached to the accessories office, what does it say, single or two-family?
Single, no, it's currently single.
That's what I'm saying, when you get attached as a single family.
Correct.
Has it been used as a two?
Not yet.
Not yet, no, that's what I'm...
I'm staying, I'm not...
It's not, it's not being used as a two, as far as I understand it.
All right. All right, continue.
I mean, that's about it, I mean, again, we're not really planning to change anything outside.
Is it, the one unit is how many bedrooms, and the second unit, how many bedrooms?
So currently, we have plans to make a two-bedroom downstairs on the first floor, and then a three- or a four-bedroom on the second and third floor, which we would rent, because again, it's just me and my wife, we wouldn't need that one. She'll probably be a family living upstairs with kids, and then just, we don't have any kids, so it'll be just us.
I see, you have an open stairway on the second floor, and the second means a degress.
Yes.
The degress is inside, inside the building?
Correct, correct, there's two sets of stairs.
They enclosed. You say they enclosed the inside, right, and not outside?
Yes, there is a front staircase and a back staircase in the house, just like a...
Inside, right?
Inside, correct.
That's all.
Correct, just like a regular multifamily.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else in favor?
No, he's a...
No, no, it's just you. Or just me?
Just you.
Are you in favor?
I don't think he's...
Are you in favor?
Yes or no?
No, not at this point.
All right, take your seat, if you're not in favor. Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else in favor, or in favor, or opposed? Anyone opposed to your petition? Say your name, address, and your like and favor.
My name's Warner Maris, I live to Ashland Square, San Diego. I live on 97th Bay Street, right in front of it. So that is the street, you don't say you want a two-family, that's concerning, so that is the street, no parking, so no, um, what, the city decides to do with the house, the weather conditions are not good, the rats are getting bigger and bigger. While you're doing a lot of construction, should be creating more rats. And like I said, there is, with that one, there's three single houses, and three, three family houses, with the children with mine. I have three family houses, and the other, the two, entry, there's two family, two, three family houses, right, and there's only between the two, the two, three family houses, a single house. That's his, a single house, and right next to it's another single house. That's it. And that's, that's why I'm mostly opposed to it, rat issues, construction, parking, all of that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The lady in the back raised her hand.
I don't know, was it a gentleman?
Oh, gentleman?
Yeah.
Would you mind if I, you opposed?
You against this, right?
Yes.
All right, come on in.
I see your name, address, and occupation.
Ian Jermaine, worked for Federal Express, I live at 247 Parkland.
Parkland?
Parkland Ave.
Oh, it's a wrong case.
This is 96 Light Street.
So your case is next.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
All right. Anyone else here in favor? Close the hand for those in favor? Opposed? Anyone opposed to this petition?
Just call there.
Yeah, okay. Close the hand for those opposed, for the wish of the board.
Well, what's the wish of the board?
Yeah.
There's a part, so wait, one unit is two bedrooms, and another unit would be three or four? Is he gonna meet their parking requirements?
Yes, more than four.
Three to four bedrooms?
And a bedroom still remain the same, so they can have a single family with seven bedrooms.
No, but if you have two, isn't it like based on bedroom parking?
Right, one bedroom.
One bedroom, right.
Which did meet.
So there's three, so he has to, he has to have four parking spaces back?
He can, yeah, so he can answer.
You can come in and answer. You would have to have four parking spaces?
Three.
Three.
Technically, this... This would require one and a half.
Yeah.
Okay.
The guy won.
Yeah. It's hard to...
Based on parking, or is it based on...
I don't know.
It's...
I just, I think it was a south way.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I think the answer to your question?
Yeah.
Right.
I think if you had a choice between four or five, and you only needed four, I would just stick with four, save it for green space.
What? Yeah, I do, I do.
Well, we're still waiting to hear what you're gonna go on.
So is there something?
No, no.
Any question aside?
No.
Do you want to get a certified parking plan, or...
It's a petition. Yeah.
You can sign it to that.
The motion was made, that's right.
Yeah, but we want to see a parking plan, show them the full parking spaces.
There's been no motion.
There's not been a motion?
No.
Oh, I thought you made a...
I think I'm ready to make a motion if you ask me.
It's kind of hard to hear.
Yeah, I understand. I will make a motion to grant with stipulation to get a parking plan, a certified parking plan, but that shows the full spaces. Oh, the minimum required space?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
I agree.
Something, I was thinking...
There's a second.
Yep, I got you. Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant with stipulations.
Certified parking spot places. Member McCullough?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
Member Wooton?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
Remember Crowitz?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
And Member Kellman?
Yes, with stipulation.
Okay.
The petition has been... About three minutes left.
All set.
Three minutes left.
Yeah. Reset.
I'm gonna go open the window for a minute, then I'll get back in again.
I'll open it.
All right.
We have a next...
Open down.
Yeah. Okay.
Can we get a lift? It's over.
All set with that case.
Good job, Mr. Allen.
Okay. And, yeah, he's gonna show all the parking space that's required in back, so you don't go with that. You don't have to concern in any rat concern. ICB is currently on the front floor, but it's moving to the third floor, and it should be able to help you all with that, things, rat problems, and maybe, okay? And thank you.
Okay, next case. Anyone else? Open again. Next case is 231 Parkland Avenue.
I'm not on that, right?
I'm gonna read it.
Okay. Yeah. 231 Parkland Avenue, parcel number 057186004. Petitioner Richard Garcia, by his attorney Samuel Vitale, to vary the provision of the City of Lynn Zone Ordinance Section 8.9.1, which prohibits, which prohibits two residential buildings on a single lot in an R2 district by allowing the construction of additional residential, single-family dwelling with 14,275 square feet and 75 feet frontage with an existing single-family dwelling. There, there on, the variance request requires the Zoning Board of Appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zone zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provision of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degrading from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
Thank you. The hearing is over, for those in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Attorney Sam Vitale. I represent the petitioners to, seated here, Richard, my wife, Stephen Garcia, also living as Jack, using it. The board has some familiarity with this neighborhood, it has some familiarity with this proposal. I'd like to tell you what this case is about and what it is. So firstly, as the ads states, there's only one reason we're here. There is a portion of the Lynn Zone Ordinance that has a property lot that says, and I'm reading, you can show it, that separate lots are granted. It says, single residence in the general residence, this is the general residence district, these residential buildings shall be located on a separate lot. This lot is in excess of the 12,000 feet required for general residence, it has 14,000. This lot has 75 feet of frontage, which is requiring for a two-family dwelling. This lot can have two-family dwelling on it tomorrow, without any input from the neighbors or you. The reason we're here is that the Garcia's, the happy people, lived in Lynn, once they living in Lynn, their kids go to school, they go work in the community, and they love the neighborhood they're in. They were fortunate enough to be able to buy the front house, and then acquired a lot of the real, and the city merged those lots for tax purposes, though the city is a doctrine called merge of ID, if you own A, B, which will include C. There's also a statute that allows individuals who own the property, it's called a perimeter plan, lines of existing ownership, this is what I own. So the Garcia's own in excess of 14,000 square feet, they have 75 feet of frontage, and they use as a two-family, if they allow use. So we're here because of that one provision in the zoning ordinance, because it's a building. That's the only relief, basically. Unfortunately, there are people who have misunderstandings about what the zoning ordinance provides. The zoning ordinance doesn't ensure you that you get good neighbors, but it has rules and regulations. It also doesn't say you can control what goes on on property owned next to, so we came and we tried with respect to what we recognized as two separate lots. That's how they were on the D, they were two separate lots, there was only one plan of record. We proposed using the frontage and having a right of, the board didn't like that plan, and that got rejected. But the fact is that we're not too proud to say that imitation is the high form of flattery, we look next door, right next door, and there are three buildings in the general residence district on a separate lot that doesn't have frontage. And it was here in June 2020, when someone came in and asked for a one building and a lot, but they filed a petition, and the board admitted, they wanted four units, and the board allowed three, and now there are three homes in the condominium, 243, 245, 247, next door, three buildings on that lot. And then again, more recently, an artist, someone came before you with a single-family district, proposed, it was called a row house, which is not a permitted use in the single-family district, and they had a, and then they had a better plan, and the board saw it to allow three units in a row, in a row house, on a lot that was 10,000 square feet. So what they supposed to want to do is use the property that they struggled, they think, want to stay in Lynn, and this is the way they can do it. Now, I understand there are people here in opposition. My folks believe that this is a right that they have a lot of fear of failure, that they can just be average folks who live in Lynn, pay taxes in Lynn, want to stay living in Lynn, and they want to add and develop. And I tell you, soon see, that changes the coming in the zoning ordinance, so they're allowed, right, accessory dwelling units, so-called in-law apartments, a lot, so you can put an additional home, because it's a recognition, it's a need for more housing units in the city. That doesn't say that you can't move certain levels of regulation, but what you should focus on are real, genuine concerns. And when people come up and express concerns about fireworks, noise, and we've been through this one before, unfortunately, Lynn's ordinance doesn't have a right of privacy, currently the US Supreme Court's got a question about that. But if you are required to have a red, 15 feet, and you have more, you have 20, you can't impose a strict requirement if I need the 15-foot red. I understood that there were people that had it, so we have a custom-made house proposed with a cot to pack, and it rocks, so there won't be headlights going across, and we proposed to build armor bikes, not a retaining, but you can plant trees on your own land without anybody's approval. And so we adapted to what we understood were genuine concerns, but I can't sit here and say that somebody won't be setting up fireworks on the 4th of July in the United States of America, certainly not in cities, but if that's a concern, it's, it's not a concern in the zone. There are so-called community concerns, you hear it all the time, there's gonna be more traffic. I've said to somebody recently, if everyone in this room, everyone in this room disappeared tomorrow, and one of you can come back, there'll be more traffic next year in Lynn without without all of us. That's a community concern. What's required is you have onsite packing. This proposal has onsite packing. What's proposed is the condominium to be, which means all of the land that fourteen thousand square feet is common area. The difference is this, the people who live there have to contribute the monthly maintenance of that. They have to provide trash removal, provide the road snow plowing, they don't burn city services. This is because condominium is not zoning, it's a form of ownership. So the folks next door, they have three buildings, they have a homeowners association and, and they do somewhat similar thing. And that's how some of the costs that ordinarily wind up being borne by everybody who pays the city services are fact paid by the people who want to have certain use of their property. But that use that it's required for the apartment doesn't compel them to solve all the problems. So I understand if people have concerns that when there's construction, uh, there are roads. I've learned from Jack that when you get a building from it, you have to file a plan of extermination. So if there are roads in this area, the neighborhood now got nothing to do with the Garcia's and their home. Okay? If there were roads at the construction of the three buildings next door, uh, there was a plan to mitigate that because you couldn't get a building from without. So you're going to hear people's concerns, but these folks have believed, and I know because I've been here as long, not as long as Pat, but I know that with Pat, and it's under his chair, everybody gets an opportunity to speak. He treats people with fairness and dignity. And he also treats people with the same kind of consideration, whether they're elected officials, not elected officials, non-English speaking, English speaking. So you couldn't ask for a better, a person to preside. And so I've had many a quarrel with this board, but I never had a quarrel with respect to the way people get treated. And what I want you to do is give what lawyers call way to the evidence, listen to what people say. So if they say, I don't like it, I don't want, that's a personal opinion, it's got nothing to do with zone. It's what it is. That one line that says building, that's what we're here. And understand that people have a right to use their property and what they want to describe to you is why they want to stay in Lynn. And what they want to do, this home that Jack is gonna custom build, this one that's in, up in one area that I have seen before, beautiful home, adds value to the neighborhood, it increases tax revenue for the city of Lynn, uh, helps beautify the neighborhood. So don't let people say they're gonna visit a property with all these ills and problems got nothing to do with the Garcia's or the property at two thirty-one Park. So Christina's here, she wanted to, she's nervous, so she brought a written statement she wants to read, and then she brought a petition of her neighbors. But I still have learned a lot about sometimes the best advocates for what people want, not always, it's, it's themselves. So this is Christina. You have to give me eight minutes.
You have a question.
Christina Garcia, two thirty-one Parkland Ave.
You have a question.
I'm an advocate with the district attorney's office.
You'll have the floor.
Um, good evening, members of the board. My name is Christina Garcia, and I was born and raised here in Lynn. I have lived here my entire life and have spent most of my childhood living in a neighborhood close to Wyommo Square, down the street from Parkland Ave. My husband, Richard Garcia, and I have lived on Parkland Ave with our two children, Justin, who is nine, and Angelina, who is five. They are all here with me tonight. For the past fifteen years, I have worked as a victim witness advocate with the Essex County District Attorney's Office, serving the community of Lynn. My husband has worked at, at a nonprofit organization here in the city, at an economic opportunity as a maintenance director for the past twenty years. Our kids attended a school in Lynn that they, they and I grew up. I want to not only remain in Lynn, but in the neighborhood that we have raised our kids in for the past seven years. We want to build a condo in the rear of our current house to design to fit the exact needs of our family. In addition, we are made aware yesterday that three ma, three neighbors, um, have written letters to City Hall. I'm not going to address each one of the inaccurate statements made, but feel that there are few I would like to address to correct the record. Specific to Dawn McGann's letter, firstly, we are not willing to do, we work very hard for our money. My husband works seven days a week and I also work full-time. Uh, the boat is not ours, it's my dad's, which he inherited from my grandfather when he passed away. Since he had nowhere to store it and it had been, and it had a lot of sentimental value to him, we allowed him to store it on our property temporarily until he could afford a, a permanent location. To address that concern, the boat has been removed as of October twelfth. In regards to the so-called safety concerns that Ms. McGann's letter mentions, my husband and I never lit fireworks. My.
Excuse me, you're explaining a weather that's so no-shrill.
Yeah, I'm responding to.
We, we.
We, if talking on my tone right now, let them explain that. Whoever wrote that.
Oh, I'm responding to their letter.
I'm seeing, yeah, we have that letter and everything, we have that. And, you know, and it's all explained in the paperwork. I'm not trying to cut you off, but it's just, you know, we have other cases to be heard and we don't want to be here all night, that's all.
Okay, so you don't want me to talk about the fireworks?
Well, you know, talk about what you feel about this.
Okay, okay, let me just go. All right, so I will, I'll just go with half, I have this card. Oh, there are a lot of mention of rats. For the record, I have never seen a rat at times of construction, when they built the three condos, uh, we've seen mice, but I've never seen a rat. And traffic, but those are, as Attorney Vitali said, community issues and not specific to any owner. We are very reasonable people, reasonable people, and we only ask of the rest of our neighbors, as many are we have, who have signatures from eight, uh, eight neighbors supporting the builds, um, including our direct next-door neighbors, both of them. Thank you. We, we have collected eight signatures of neighbors who support the builds, um, including both next-door neighbors. Um, so to address Dawn's concern regarding privacy, we can put forward all the privacy clients, if that would help. Also, we have modified the plan to move the house an additional five feet to increase the rear yard to twenty feet to address the against privacy concern. Contrary to what Bill Gillen's letter seems to imply, we, along with our attorney, are not trying to circumvent any rules or regulations. Our attorney has well-versed in this area and has done his due diligence to ensure that this is the proper and effective way to address the concerns raised, including his right-of-way concern, and hopefully secures the board of approval. My understanding is that the three condos that were recently built, also had to address concerns raised and went for several times before gaining approval. We supported the condo being built because we are reasonable neighbors. In fact, to contradict the common concern about the inclusion of parties in my un, un, with my limited understanding and real estate, new construction actually increases property value of surrounding properties. We want to continue to invest in our neighborhood. We love the stadium and are proud to be a part of it. We have done everything we can to address the concerns raised. I have a little over a yard, I'm not sure, a little something mentioned of trash and I just want to, the way you have the wolf on, it's coming out. We have done everything we can to address the concerns raised. We are not displacing anyone and actually creating more housing. It would mean a lot to my family and I if we were allowed to build this condo. We truly appreciate all of you taking the time, taking this into consideration, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else say in favor of this petition?
Oh, yeah.
Well, as indicated, the builder is here, Richard's back here babysitting the, the two kids, um, and I'll focus again. The only relief we want is for that one line provision. And understand that people believe that there won't be a two-family, two thirty-one park. It may not be what the Garcia's dream to do. I hope they will say, because of the kind of citizens and their needs and the kind of people who lead the system that says they come for a group like you, uh, even though there may be average folks in some folks' minds, they're to me extraordinary folks who are perspective.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, a question. So it's been, it's been planned here to make the entire lot and everything that goes in a lot as a condo, including the property up front.
Common area, it'd be two units, the first, the house will be unit, first house will be unit one, the second house will be unit two, but as you, if you're familiar with condominiums, uh, all the land belongs to everyone, the frontage counts for everyone and the, uh, that's called common area.
I just want to understand.
Yeah.
What you're doing with the title.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Vitali, I just want to explain one thing about the law. I've seen plenty of lots that have been on the board, and the ones that have the most in the back end are there for a reason, there's a benefit to the front house. So you put a swimming pool in the back, accessory building or a garden, this will all be wiped away from the house in the front because they won't have that opportunity. That to me is a sad thing, not a good fit, the city.
Well, in a condominium, there are rules and regulations about what use can be made in, in the so-called common areas. That's, that's on, an ownership and that's an agreement people enter into when they buy a unit. But the city of Lynn has regulations now about accessory buildings or structures like a pool. It's got to be three feet from the sideline, can't be within so many feet, especially a pool's got to be, uh, fenced for safety. Uh, but those are uses that are regulated either by other bodies or by, uh, regulations that are already in existence. But in addition there to, most condominiums have rules and regulations about whether you can have cookouts, uh, whether you can, uh, P of automobile, I mean, I draft condominium documents, uh, and I, I wrestle with things like pets, uh, or seasonal decorations. I've been a patriot and said that you can put up seasonal decorations in the United States flag, uh, but, you know, people decorate their homes, but in a condominium, generally what you want to do is keep what they call architectural integrity, that, that, uh, it's, it sort of looks to get like it belongs there and blends in like the one next door. If you look at two forty-three, two forty-five and two forty-seven, they're virtually identical buildings. That's called architectural integrity. And sometimes people want to put, uh, something on the exterior to sort of distinguish this, but there are rules and regulations, unlike, uh, ownership of a single family, uh, once a person buys a condominium, they, they have to subscribe to the, not only what the zoning ordinance is require, but what the rules and regulations of the condominium might require. So in a sense, um, it gives you an added guarantee about the upkeep of the property because they collect money every month from people, what's called a monthly maintenance fee, uh, to provide a, a fund to do those kinds of things that, uh, need to be done to keep the property in good shape. And it's taxed, by the way, each one of them is taxed as a, a single unit.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Vitali. Anyone else here favor this petition? Anyone else here favor this petition? Anyone else here opposed or favors or opposes the cause? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Yes, one lady, lady. Stay here and address your occupation.
Dawn McGann, H Short Road, um, Secretary Salem Hospital. Well, again, nothing's changed, our concerns, nothing has been addressed. I don't know about them saying the trash was out, but this was a few days ago. Who's behind it? The rats are a concern, they do go through and they go into that backyard where their, where their, their practice. Okay? We're extremely concerned because what I think you were told before is that they were gonna do like a two-feet rating and then a four-foot retaining wall. There were six foot backs. It would be right, they were gonna build right against us, we were told, and that it would go right at the very top of that fence. Okay?
Build what exactly?
Well, when they, they said they were gonna go right, right on our property line is what we were told before.
What, a dwelling or a fence?
The fence and, you know, like they were gonna build it out the two feet, that's when the four-foot retaining wall, and we're just kind of concerned about it being right against our fence and when it rains and it snows and everything else coming down. The rats are a concern. I spoke to, um, inspectional services last night at a meeting about that. They had set off fireworks, it hit our tree, scared us all to death, dog went running, I went running after the dog, it was like an immediate turn. Said it hit the tree, fell right in front of everybody, I ran after it with the dog, another one went off, I turned around, there's smoke, there's a kid about thirteen laughing at me because we all kind of panicked about it.
Mr. McGann, do you, you understand that this is, this is a ZB, so I think those concerns seem like.
Right.
Police concern and a high speed.
I was gonna call the police.
Right, this is a high speed concern, it, it really has nothing to do with what.
Right. So I was gonna call, but my daughter works for MASTA, so she was like, I don't bother you.
You're not. If you just.
It said on the yes, instruction of a single family dwelling. When this first came to mind, we had no idea if you planned on building condos, that's what we were telling you.
Well, it, it, well, finding that maybe, Mr. Vitali, it's an association, it's not, it's not similar to a three-building, you're seeing further up to the property. It's still a single dwelling in the back, I don't think you have saw this, it's still a single dwelling, but it's an association when you combine both the property, I mean, both dwellings.
So can they, if you had this?
Yeah.
Can they build?
No.
Like another little one?
No, no, they can only build this, whatever we're seeing today, but that's how they can do it.
Sold and then?
It could be sold as a, as a single house.
As a single house, but not the whole entire thing?
Yes, up to the association.
Okay, that's what I was wondering was if, um, they could do that.
No, no, it's just two, two individual dwelling and one lot, that's it. That's it.
Now, but about like, you know, it's a lot of things, trees, a lot of where they can cut off whatever tree is over hanging, okay?
It's on their property.
It's on their property, yes, okay. They can't touch the rest of that tree.
That's right.
How are they gonna cut all the other trees that are hanging over my property and the property of the people that store without going on?
They could try and do that, maybe, miss.
Well, we, we have authority over that.
Yeah.
The law says if it's a fruit tree or something that's over hanging, they have a right to cut it down, but they have to throw the branches of the fruit back.
Yeah.
They also get, they can lean against your property and still do the same thing, so that's, that's possible.
So if they ruin the fence though?
What was that?
If they trash our fence that we have, they can fix that?
Well.
Well.
We can't answer that.
Again, that doesn't have anything to do with.
Yeah, we can't answer.
That's.
Yeah.
So we just go with that.
Yeah. We can't really answer that.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, obviously they have an advantage because they had to make the letter, and then the letter went to them, so they had the upper hand. They don't get so out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else here opposed to this petition?
Members of the Board of Appeals, my name is Joseph E. Scammell III. I reside at two thirty-six Parkland Avenue, which is directly across the street. And I am here to oppose this petition on zoning grounds. First of all, it was denied five to nothing on June seventh, twenty twenty-two. I've been around this city and city government for over forty years. I have never, ever seen a petition be represented before a board in this short period of time. Innovative decisions out of the building department, innovative schemes by an attorney may be that as it may. The intent is still the same, to build a single-family dwelling in the rear of an existing home without proper frontage. This practice was outlawed when I was on the city council in the nineteen eighties. These driveways lead to problems. If a petitioner is dissatisfied with the denial, they have a right to go to court. They chose not to go to court, they chose to come back here. I maintain, and I've asked the city solicitor for an opinion, this. I maintain, and I've asked the city solicitor for an opinion, this is an abuse, apparently to my, it's my opinion, it's abuse of the process to come back in. The intent remains the same, and it was denied five to nothing. I think the solicitor has also opined that the, this petition would require a second hearing for the frontage issue because the property would not front on a main street. Okay? My opposition still remains the same as it was in June. I did write it down because I, so long ago, I was afraid I'd forget. But there are frontage issues that, on Parkland Avenue, there are public safety issues with shared driveways. There are severe public safety issues. Both my father and my grandfather were fire chiefs in this city, and they kind of, they can't attest to it anymore, they live behind me now instead of where I can get it, it's the cemetery. But the point is, I know proper fire procedure, safety is paramount concern, a shared driveway becomes an issue because emergency vehicles cannot down there when there are parking problems. Shared driveways lead to confusion, they lead to, um, disputes, and they're all right when, um, the original owners may be there and we have the condominium association, but who knows what's going to happen in the future? None of us can predict the future. We kind of can predict three, who would say three months ago that we'd be back here, uh, three months, but back in June, we'd be back here in October discussing the same thing? You never know what the future holds. In addition, this property, my property, all property in that area is owned general residence. There is nothing to prohibit anybody, anybody from coming in and petitioning to convert each unit to four units. In other words, the house, the main house at 231 could have a second story, it's general residence, or a second residence. I could do that with my house. You may not grant it, but I could petition you would zone that way. Um, I'm sure we'd have to ask somebody, I'm not, I'm saying I'm built it by right. Um, but we don't know what's going to happen. The potential is there to cause a lot of congestion and have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. Certainly additional approvals will be required. But before you go any further, you issued, this board issued the denial in June, and Lynn has made the following decision to deny. Impact on neighborhood traffic and congestion, I see no change. No hardship, I see no hardship. Density issues certainly. Use not compatible with R2 zoning, certainly. Neighborhood opposition, my opposition, the only opposition I'm concerned with remains. I feel bad for the McGanns, but I'm here to represent myself. There is nothing unique about the soil shape, but topography of the parcel of Lynn certainly isn't, other than there was a swimming pool in there at one point. And the petitioner did not meet a high burden to obtain a variance. Denied, this is denied five to nothing in June, I see no reason why this should be granted this evening. Just bear in mind that this decision you make on this property is far-reaching, far-reaching. To allow a street like Parkland Avenue, one and two family homes, all of a sudden, with large lots, everyone has a large lot along there, you will be adding to the congestion of the neighborhood, you'll be precedent-setting by granting a petition within a few months that was denied, and the zone ordinance is relevant, relevance loses, the zone ordinance actually loses relevance. This will actually nullify the effect, effect of a denial that was granted at an earlier time. The proper way, as I said, is if you were dissatisfied, go to the court of law, get a petition, let a judge decide.
Sir, can I, can I just touch on?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm at the end anyhow.
You keep repeating is that we denied this in June, yet now we're back, that was a whole different petition.
The intent remains the same.
We have to follow the petition.
You follow the petition, the intent remains the same.
It's not the same petition.
It is the same petition, not, a structure in the rear of the yard is the same thing.
It's a different petition that we're reading today.
It's a different position because, petition, I'm sorry, because the building commissioner allowed it to come here, and I say that he made a bad judgment call. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else here opposed to this petition? Yes, a better.
Yes. Well, um, gentleman McGann, you've already said a lot, you know.
Your name, address, and your occupation.
My name is Ian Jermaine, sorry.
Your name, address, and occupation?
Ian Jermaine.
Yeah.
I work at FedEx. I live at 247 Parkland Avenue.
You would have my floor.
Um, yes, um, he said they're condos, well, not necessarily condos, they're basically single-family homes on one property, and we, we don't do H and O, HRA. Um, my thing is, when I was looking for a home in Lynn, we looked all over Lynn, looked in Sawasdee, Bury, we wanted a residential area where single-family homes, and that was it. We finally found one single-family home where it's all residential neighborhoods, it's a residential neighborhood, and we purchased it. Okay, um, we actually don't want, I, Garcia came over and asked us, I said to him, are you going to tear their house down and build another house? He said, no, he's going to keep that one. I would have no problem with it if he was going to tear the first house down and build another home, but they want a bigger home or something like that, you know? And about the rats and stuff like that, there's a lot of rats around, I see them myself, parking on Parkland Ave, the traffic is very fast, it's like 35 miles an hour going down the street. Even when I'm going to my driveway, I have to slow down and not get rear-ended, sometimes there's no parking, there's parking on the side of the street, people parking on the side of the street to get over in other people's homes and stuff like that. And it's going to be very congested, um, and that's my concern about that, noise, construction, um.
So do you live, currently live in the condo, the blue condo?
Yes, I do.
So you live in the condo right now?
Yes.
Like you're opposing another condo next door to you?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
I am. And it's not, I mean, it's, so, like he was saying, what's going to stop us if we want to build a home in front of our home? We have a lot, we could put in that house here.
We can.
But we could petition for that, I mean, there's, I understand that, but what's going to stop other people from doing the same thing? You know, that's my main concern. Once you get one there, there's going to monopolize all the way, then it's going to be congested. You know, Parkland Ave is just for a single-family homes, not condos in a sense. You know, if you look at the three condos there, if we don't say it's condos, nobody thinks condos, there's three houses on a property. They're not attached to each other, everyone has their own backyard, everyone has their own front yard, basically. So it's not condos, nothing on top of each other, nothing beside each other.
Well, they are beside each other, yours and mine.
No, they're not, they're not beside, they're not attached to each other, they're separated from each other. One home here, one home here, one home there, they're not attached. Everyone has their own backyard, and so there's nothing attached.
I understand the petition here is not attached either, right?
I understand that, but I was saying, I was just saying that because they have a house in the front already.
Yeah.
Okay? Why are you going to build a, a house in the back? Now you're going to be too congested, parking and everything like that, how, how is that going to work out?
Okay.
I mean, that's my, that's my thing on it. If they're going to, if they want to take the house down in the front, and they want to build something there, I'm fine with that. But we just don't want the congestion, you know? That's my, that's my thing on it.
How do you hear this? Anyone else here opposed to this petition?
We have letters.
We have letters. Yeah, we have, we have.
One more.
Oh, yeah.
My name is Dill from 245 Parkland Ave. I work as a associate licensed in the Barton Association.
Oh, Parkland.
Barton Associate. Um, so I just want to, for your question that you were asking, that they are not attached, they are just building another house in the back. So to my knowledge, the previous landlord, when he was building the three families, three single-family house as a condominium, he wanted to build four. He wanted to build another single-family at the front lawn, but he got rejected, he said, no, because Lynn is a single-family residential area, we need a big front entry, we need a big front lawn and a big backyard and all that. So to, to that, that was my confusion when you said they are separate, that like, like what they're building, what they're going to do is separate, but what about we have a big front lawn? Can we just go and build a single-family altogether there at the front and just completely cover that up? And as another gentleman, he was mentioning earlier, everyone has a big backyard where they have space in the back, everybody wants to build something in their backyard, everybody wants to add something in the front or in the back, then this is just going to keep continuing, then nobody would want that big of a space just standing there for nothing. Everybody wants something, a little garage, a single-family, or two floors, or whatever. Just wanted to add this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here opposed to this? Anyone else in the opposition?
This is your decision, it speaks for itself. It lists the people who are in favor, among them, Mr. Scammon, for the three on, uh, 243 through 245. This is the recessive card for 247 of that gentleman who lives at the condominium. I want those as part of the record because it's source of the booth's source again.
Chairman?
Yeah.
For the record, Mr. Vitale, I oppose that petition in this very room, first came up, as we said, for four units. As a compromise, I went along with the air, but practically turning this, then it's like, three, yes.
Well, where I come from, three, four, and two.
I said, if I said a three, a two, I'm, I'm spoke.
No, I, I, you didn't misspeak.
I didn't misspeak on much.
Excuse us, we have to continue with your case.
Let's, let's hold up on the.
I want that submitted. Is that your record? It lists those who spoke.
Okay, we, we understand that, it will be duly reported. All right. Are you, if anyone has had their stay?
I'm going to read the letters.
Oh, yeah, you have, you have a letter, yeah.
Yeah.
We have a letter here for me.
We have several letters, uh, we will not read all the letters. I'm sorry?
We have a letter here.
We do, we do. Uh, we have several letters, we, we will read, um, Brian Fields, our city council at large letter, but we do have a letter from Joseph Scallion, Bruce Scoper, Richard and Don McGann. We have it on record, we did read them. Um, we'll read, uh, Brian Fields', um, letter, City Council at Large. Um, as you're aware, I'm the duly elected city council at large in the city of Lynn. This evening, a public hearing has been scheduled once again on a petition to build a second home at 231 Parkland Ave. I've been contacted by a number of neighbors who have been vehemently opposed to this petition from the outset. The zoning board of fields has previously heard a similar petition earlier this summer on essentially an identical petition. Due to your significant neighborhood proposition, the zoning board appeals correctly denied an application to subdivide the property to allow the construction of a second home at the site. The home would have had a shared driveway, as the board is aware, Parkland Ave is not conducive for on-street parking. The fact that the petitioner desires to have a close relative reside at the back property would not last indefinitely. At some point in the future, non-related parties will undoubtedly reside in these homes, at that time, a shared driveway would not be as advisable or prudent. Presumably, this would last in perpetuity. Sorry about saying that wrong. This almost certainly would result in an inconvenience for the property owner and would likely result on additional on-street parking along Parkland. Uh, the petitioner is now seeking a second bite at the apple. Petitioner is no longer asking for a variance from the frontage and area requirements of the Zen, of the Lynn Zone Ordinance. Rather, the petitioner is seeking a variance from the section 8.3.9.1 of the Zone Ordinance that prohibits the placement of two residential structure on a single lot. In all other respects, this petition is identical to the petition filed earlier this year and denied by the honorable board. I do not personally believe that there exists specific and material change in the condition that the prior denial was based on to warrant this petition to be revisited this evening. In fact, the neighbors should be permitted first to appeal to Mr. Donovan's position that his application is not identical or substantially, substantially identical to the prior denial application. I believe that the neighbors and abudders will likely have success in a challenge that essentially is identical to the petition that was in our earlier this year. Furthermore, it's my understanding that city officer George, sorry, I'm, which is the, has opinion that the petitioner also requires a variance from the provision of section 8.3.2 of the Zone Ordinance, which requires 75 feet of frontage for each residential building on the lot. The petitioner did not seek a variance from this provision of the Zone Ordinance, and as such, no building permit can lawfully be issued to the petition, even if the zoning board approves this variance request this evening. Finally, the petitioner did point to nothing unique about the soil conditions, shape, or topography of this property that would warrant this board to approve a variance request. Prior, uh, prior city councils have determined that there should be, there should not be two homes on a single lot and have further found that each separate building should have 75 feet of frontage. It is in the purview of the, of the zoning board appeals to strike these provisions of the city of Lynn Zone Ordinance. Variance should be very centered legally be granted and only where the application compiles with state law warning the Zone Ordinance to be ignored in a particular case. Those legal and factual justifications are not present in this action. As city council at large, I stand with the neighbors in opposing this petition and numerous legal and factual grounds and urge the zoning board fields to once again deny this petition. Any approval of this petition will undoubtedly be appealed and overturned by a Massachusetts court of numerous reasons. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. Very truly yours, Brian and Fields, City Council at Large.
Hey, do you have any other matters?
No, we.
You have the rest of them on record.
Okay.
We have it.
So everyone has had their stand, what is the wish of the board?
I, um, this feels like the same petition. I know that we're saying it's not, and, um, what makes someone else will come back in front of us if we make an opinion?
Same, Vitale was the attorney for both petitions, so yeah, Scam, what's the difference? The other one is frontage, this one is not.
But that's what I mean, someone's going to find a loophole and we're going to constantly get faces and, and land, and that's what makes this.
We have to make a motion.
You have to make a motion?
We have a motion.
I'm motion to deny.
All right. Did you hear a second deny? Let's hear your second motion. Hold on.
Okay, hold on. Member Lopez Hernandez to deny?
No, to deny.
Remember what to deny?
No, to deny.
Remember Wooton to deny?
Yes, to deny.
Remember Crowe to deny? Yes, to deny. Remember Callen?
Deny. Petition has been denied. We have a final release.
You can't say rights?
Right, the hearing will be, listen, I would like, would you? Please explain about the.
As, as this board knows, uh, all applications must be advertised 14 days in advance of the hearing.
Yeah.
And what has come to the law department's attention is that while an application may come in before the deadline, uh, the application is oftentimes not complete. So someone in this particular case, I believe the, the first notice in the newspaper was October 3rd or thereabouts, in compliance with the law, 14 days in advance of the, of this hearing. So anyone that purchases the item or gets a notice in the mail and about are, would believe that they'd come to Lynn City Hall and review the file and see a complete file. What I'm, what this law department is aware, uh, last Thursday or Friday, there was an attempt to supplement the file with new filings. So if, if a neighbor or an abdder came in on October the 4th or 5th, they wouldn't have the opportunity to see what was in this file. And it may be material. And it may be material, it may not be material, I know we had an issue with Spruce at the last meeting, there was some neighborhood opposition that said, this is a street that is primarily ranch houses as opposed to colonial. So without seeing the complete file, and a complete, all of the plans that are going to be before you, it's the opinion of the law department, that that matter would have to be kicked off. I did speak with the petitioner, it has been moved to the November 1 meeting in order to, to allow for the construction season to the extent that the weather cooperates. But just as a general proposition, whatever is filed before the deadline, what is advertised in the newspaper encouraging the public to come into the city clerk's office, that needs to be the file, and it needs to be in a lockbox with no further submissions, unless the board at a public hearing decides that they want, similar to Peralta Shoes, there was a desire to make the property a bit smaller, or if there's incomplete and the, the parking plan at the request of a board, to come back at a future meeting with revised plans where neighbors could presumably watch it or appear here and would have noticed that there's new plans being drawn. But if a, if a neighbor showed up on October 4, they probably would have no reason to believe on October the 13th or October the 10th that, that there would be other plans that they didn't have an opportunity to review.
We won't be able to hear it?
So we can't hear that tonight?
Not, not this evening, but it is, it has been advertised from November 1. Correct, it has been advertised, and that should have been in the paper, hopefully it was in Saturday, Monday.
Both these cases, last two cases?
Both of the cases, there were supplemental plans that may or may not have been material, but it just weren't in there when it was filed.
How are we supposed to catch this by the time we get here? And Mary, is that impossible? How are we supposed to know that it was never advertised? If, if it's already been, it's not agenda areas?
I've spoken with the clerk that ought to accept any supplemental filings once it's been in, in the paper, and clerk contacted me Friday that there was Thursday or Friday of last week, a supplemental filing that wasn't in the file on, on day one of the advertisement. And in no fault of anyone, we just want to make sure, for procedural reasons, a neighbor could come in and just say, and, and you, you may be on the right side of a denial or approval, it's just for procedural grounds, the neighbor has a real good case that they didn't see a complete set of plans.
Some clarifications, they brought that material to the public meeting and presented that at the public meeting, that's permissible?
No, because again, there may be, there may be individuals that don't oppose something like the Spruce. And I will say that some of the neighbors in the Spruce said that there was all ranches, I did look, that there are some colonials on Spruce as well. But if you look at the file and it, it changes, that may be the reason why you don't choose to, to appear. And at that point, they, they may watch it, and it's not live, these zoning board hearings, so they wouldn't even have necessarily have a knowledge that there've been revised plans and stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McGovern has spoken, I think, to Mr. Alman, Mr. McGovern's a responsible developer, but I just want to, again, intrude with facts. Councilor Hogan represents the area, he's received no calls. I inquired if anybody has come to city hall asking about plans for South Street, the answer is no. Notwithstanding that, that it has been re-advertised, will be here on November 1. And I also would suggest that scrutiny be given to what the application has printed on it as what's required. If you go to the city's website and you download the application, first of all, it's got the fee schedule from five years ago.
Don't we change that last year, remember that?
Oh, the fees have changed, there's no question about that.
Well, on the paper, the application, we changed that with Norman, and our three of us were there with Norman Paul.
So I'm just saying to you that not everybody's a developer like Mr. McGovern, not everybody can afford architects, and so we don't have a problem complying, but I think you got to think about the import of, of some folks who come here, like the gentleman who came in and has a plan, that he has, not everyone is of the same ability, and this is recognized fortunately by the Site Plan Review Committee, which when it first came out required 10 copies of full architectural drawings, and, and I argued then, as I'm saying to you now, that not everybody's the developer. Some are just folks that want to make their two family or three family. And then some go to the expense of changing their plans to satisfy you, go to the expenditure, make all your changes, and then have their petitions denied. But that's a risk that some people can take, but I just think that when you adopt blanket policies, you should understand that it has implications not just for people who can hire me, or people who can have architects, it has implications for all kinds of folks. And so I think you ought to take a look at what is online as far as what's required. And we'll be here on the 1st.
No second filing fee for the foster rate.
Just processes.
Hey, that's, we don't need to hear that, right?
No. No, wait, 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 we have to find out how to finish this case.
Yes, I continue.
That would be okay.
Okay.
Continue.
Withdraw.
Oh, yeah, they have the nicely of the record.
You like to withdraw?
And then we do it again.
It's a brand new case.
Is it a brand new petition?
Yes.
But, but not time. We'll get tired.
It's just to keep this. Is anyone gonna?
I'm watching that read, Drew.
No, no, do we have to say?
No, we have to do the case.
Withdraw without prejudice, is that how we're saying it?
On both cases. All right. Member Lopez Hernandez, to withdraw without prejudice on both cases.
Yes, to withdraw.
Member McCullough?
Yes, to withdraw.
Member Wootton?
Yes, to draw.
Member Callen?
Yes.
Member Callen?
Yes, withdraw.
Withdraw on both cases.
Thank you.